Welcome to Planning Board Meeting of January 6, 2021. Andy? Are we still good?
As far as I can tell.
Yeah, we're all right. Should I continue?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, I'll start with roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio.
Here.
Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford.
Here.
Leah McGovern.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Bonnie Sontag here. Lynda Guthrie, note taker, is here. And I see Caitlin Sullivan, planner, and Andy Fort, planning director, here. I'll go through the agenda. Public hearings, one scheduled for Institution for Savings has asked for a continuance. So we will not be discussing that tonight. Other business, approval of the minutes from our 121620 meeting, annual election of officers, potential zoning amendments and open discussion for 2021 priorities, other updates from the chair or the planning director. So going to the first item. Request for a continuance by the Institution for Savings. May I have a motion to approve a continuance to January 20?
I'll make that motion, Leah.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second. Alden?
Okay, and I'll take roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. So we will hear them at our next meeting. Other business, approval of the minutes from December 16. I'll take a motion and then open it for any discussion. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Alden?
Second?
Tanya will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call to approve the minutes. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yeah.
Anne?
abstain. I was not here.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Abstain wasn't present.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. Minutes are approved. Go to annual election of officers, and I'll turn it over to Leah to present the slate.
Yes, you might have to remind me, though, of the secretary. First, I would like to nominate Rick Tinter to be the, oh, well, first Bonnie Sontag to continue as chair, Rick Tinter to be the new vice chair, and can you just remind me?
Beth?
Beth Delio to be the new secretary.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve, and we can have any discussion after that. Motion to approve the slate?
Motion to approve. Anne?
Second?
I can say that.
I'll second.
Okay, whoever Lynda got on that one. Any discussion? I will take a roll call on that. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank Leah and Don for their service. And welcome, Rick and Beth. And thank you all for your confidence in me, and I will continue to try to live up to your expectations with your support. So with that, we will take a look at what's happening or what we want to see happen in 2021. I left it open, but I think you know that there are many unfinished planning issues on the table or on the back burner, or whatever you want to call it. And I'd just like to get those listed out from everybody, what you think we ought to be working on this year as a planning with an emphasis on the planning part of the planning board. And anything else you'd like to see dealt with that you feel like hasn't gotten the attention that it needs. And once we've got the laundry list together, we'll look at prioritizing and figuring out how we're going to deal with it, especially under the constraints of, for the moment anyway, remote meetings. But don't let that get in your way of saying what you think needs to be worked on, because where there's a will, there's a way. So the floor is open.
Bonnie, I'll start. This is Anne. I think one of the problems we are facing is the tremendous delay in the work of the zoning advisory committee. And I think it should be a priority to really rewrite our zoning, no matter what that takes in terms of money, outside consultants, whatever. It's frustrating to do a little piece at a time and not see the whole picture or where we're going. I know you put me on that committee for a couple of months. That was two years ago, Bonnie. So I guess that's my, would be my number one priority. How can we move that along?
Okay. Anything else on your list that's not number one?
Really? Eager to see Waterfront West.
Really? Careful what you wish for.
Eager doesn't necessarily mean, you know, a positive.
So are you saying you want to see the application come in, or is there some piece of work that we have to do that you would like to recommend?
I don't think it's in our court right now. Well, I don't know. Yeah. What, wasn't, is it the city council that has to do a new overlay district? Where, what, what is the status of Waterfront West?
That's it. The overlay district, we just dropped the discussion. We were actually looking at it ourselves, saying that we ought to be prepared before the application comes back at us, an application comes back at us, so that we were in agreement with the city council of what we wanted to see there. So I guess it's the overlay district.
Andy, this is Andy Fort. I can speak to that. So the last, we had discussion about this before COVID, obviously, as was mentioned earlier, COVID's taken a lot of people's time off in different areas, but before COVID, we were last talking when the zoning was withdrawn from the city council, and it was decided that that package was nowhere near acceptable. There was agreement that we needed to first decide what sort of massing and spacing would be appropriate down there on the waterfront, rather than doing it the way that it seemed to be started at that point, which was language put on the table, without really thinking about the urban design implications of that language. So the idea was to get a 3D consultant to do modeling, similar to what Portsmouth has done in a, for a different type of reason, but Portsmouth has these little samples for their downtown that you can download. Basically provide a 3D model, so we could actually have some deliberations locally on what massing, spacing of buildings and so forth would make sense, and then go and write the zoning language to allow that to happen through the appropriate process, special permit or otherwise. That got derailed. COVID hit, got derailed. We never got the consultant, and nobody, you know, has felt comfortable bringing forward a transfer request for a couple thousand dollars for doing that process right now because of COVID. We certainly could ask for that. But my assumption is it would make sense to wait until the COVID situation is passed, because there is concern about the city's budget right now. So the idea was to spend a little bit of city money, which I think would be well, you know, spent. But the idea was to spend some of that city money on a 3D model that could help us to then come up with the framework of spatially, urban design-wise, of what we want for Waterfront West, rather than looking at language that may have, you know, come from the developer's perspective.
I don't think $2,000 is a budget breaker in our city. I just paid my taxes. You could take some of that. Yeah, I think that's as important as rewriting the zoning, is to get back on track with the city at the driver's seat with Waterfront West. Whose responsibility would that be? Who would make that request? Would that come from the city council? Because they're responsible for creating the overlay district?
I would actually recommend that the planning board, if it makes sense, authorize the chair to write a letter to the city council and the mayor, asking, you know, recognizing, of course, we're in the pandemic. I think that's been, you know, one of the, you know, the things that they've been looking at recently in recent months, but recognizing that, that it is still important, as you pointed out, to move ahead with, you know, the rezoning on Waterfront West and get that in place prior to New England Development or anyone else coming forward. And with that in mind, the relatively small expenditure, given the city's overall budget, that it would still be timely to do that. That coming from the planning board's perspective, you know, obviously, the office here would support that. Then using those monies to, you know, if consultant services were needed, that's fine. I don't think the language of the ordinance is necessarily the issue. I think the issue that we've gone over so many times is the spatial relationship down there, and what does or does not make sense and is agreeable to folks. So I think if we spend time on that and have the consultant help us with the spatial massing side of things, then the language can be written accordingly.
How do other members feel about Bonnie writing that letter? I, I, I think it's a good idea.
I, I think, I agree that, that Waterfront West, moving that forward, being more proactive about it, rather than waiting for the applicant to come back with a, with their own idea, is a good idea. So I think, I think it'd be appropriate to, to start moving that forward in whatever way, you know, we do that.
Well, it's not very different from, I mean, it's, it's part of zoning, really. It's part of rezoning. So it makes sense to do all of it.
Okay. Are you done, Anne? I don't want to cut you off if you've got other thoughts you want to share with us.
It is important to do all of it, but that is one piece I would take out and absolutely move forward with, because it's the most important thing the city will do in the next decade.
Yeah, so as I said, I'm going to list all these things I've put.
Yeah.
And then.
And I don't think creating a model, I don't think COVID interferes with that.
Yeah. Okay, so it's on the list of things to consider doing, and I haven't any objection to it. It's just that I don't want to say what we're going to do when until we got the whole list here. Just imagine I'm in front of the group with a magic marker on a flip chart, and I'm writing all this stuff up. So carry on. Who else would like to contribute some ideas for our planning work?
I think, I'll start. I think that the, the idea of getting, getting back into the zoning rewrite is, is very important. I actually had, came up with six items that I thought were important, and Waterfront West was definitely one of them. And they all relate to zoning, and they all relate to, all except for one, relate to things that are called out in the master plan. You know, I think that's, it's important for us to go back and look at the master plan and see what, what it has said that we should be working on. Been, I guess, three years now since, since the master plan was adopted, and we probably should be going back and looking at it periodically to just kind of check what we're, you know, what kinds of things we, that we said we were going to do, because that's our, that, that master plan is really part of our plan for ourselves. Some of it is, is zoning, some of it is operational. Not all of it relates to the planning board, but a good chunk of it, we're listed in a good chunk of the recommendations.
Did you want to briefly?
Sorry. Your six items.
Okay. Well, the first one, the one that I thought was most important, which is the only one that's not listed in the master plan, is to look at the zoning from the point of view of climate change and sea level rise, and particularly the floodplain overlay district, and do some adjustments to that. So I think that's something that we should do. Interesting, I don't think that the city was really that aware of, of climate change only three years ago, because it doesn't, it hardly appears in the master plan at all. So I think that's an area where we, we could do a lot of work.
Rick, this is Andy. I can actually speak to that as well. I drafted something for Plum Island that's meant to address those issues. I can speak and summarize that in more detail, what you, what it's about. But it's largely about restricting further growth and expansion on the island beyond what they are right now. I've spoken to a city councillor about sponsoring that, and the idea is to have that in the second council packet of this month, so that that discussion with a formal zoning change can begin. I realize that might be controversial to folks about their development rights on the island, but that seems to be a very timely issue, as you point out, and so the idea that is there to initiate a no-expansion-on-the-island zoning change.
Yeah. That's, that's good. I mean, I was, I wasn't even thinking of Plum Island so much as thinking about the downtown and the, and the riverfront and the industrial park. And all those areas are going to be hit by, by sea level rise and climate change. And that's really where I, where my head was at. And I obviously, you know, should have been thinking about Plum Island as well. So that would be a good thing to add on to that. My, my second area of concern had to do with our site development standards, and particularly landscaping and environmental protection, stormwater management. I think we need to do a lot to upgrade that to be sort of consistent with best management practices. We don't, I was kind of searching through our, our site plan standards and didn't see very much in terms of low-impact development and kind of environmentally conscious best management practices for stormwater management and erosion. So that was my second one. After our, this, all the work we've been doing with a couple of projects in the downtown, I thought, looking at the historic standards in the downtown overlay district, would be my third, my third one. These actually aren't in, in order of priority, but they're, but they're just, I was just trying to organize them through the zoning. Also related to what we've been talking about in the downtown, I think we need to look at our parking standards. Story Avenue, which is called out in the, in a couple places in the master plan for encouraging mixed-use development and higher development standards, and pedestrian circulation and so forth, would be my fifth, and my sixth was Waterfront West. But I think all of these, yeah, I guess that kind of points to the fact, you know, goes back to Anne's point about the whole zoning ordinance, we should be, we should be looking at, and it's just hard to pick out, you know, with a, with a, with a group that is spending a lot of our time reviewing development applications and trying to squeeze in time to, to think about non-development-related projects. And it's kind of hard to think about taking on the whole ordinance. And actually, I had a question for Andy. In preparation, when I was doing this, this, thinking about this, I was looking for the work that the zoning advisory committee or the, or the, or the consultant had done in the last couple of years, and I know it was there at one point, and I just couldn't find it again. How do I, how do you locate that on the web?
Oh, let me take a look right now. We had a website that we established, Engage Newbury Port, as you might recall, and so we started using that platform, and as you might recall, Community Opportunities Group recommended that as a way to really stimulate this community's discussion about the, the project. I'm not convinced that that was the best expenditure of funds, but it was something that the zoning advisory committee felt was, was persuaded was a very important part of, of that project. So we spent some time setting up this website to, to post that information. So that website is still there. I will check right now to make sure there, I believe Diane has maintained a connection between our website and, and that Engage page, but I also had asked her some time back, and I realized this might have gotten lay-weighted because of the pandemic, but I'd asked her to migrate the information from Engage Newbury Port back to the city's website, because we were not paying for another year's subscription on that platform. Oddly, it seems like every day I open my plat, my browser, and would, because I have that page bookmarked, it's, it starts up every day, but for some reason, we're beyond the, the contract period, and they're still doing it. So at any rate, I'll ask her to make sure that all that material is migrated back to the city website again. But the, it is, it is posted there on this engagenewburyport.com webpage.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Of everything that's been suggested, or if you have something else, could I hear from others about what you think ought to be prioritized as first-round consideration to do some work on?
Bonnie, this is Tanya. I, I would agree with Rick that probably one of our first priorities is just looking at what are the master plan goals, what should we be, you know, what, what should be tasked with? And I, I don't, I don't, I don't have the master plan in front of me to sort of see what that is. I mean, I'm assuming that it came with a task list of what we should be looking at, but it'd be good to sort of relook at that. And then I agree with Anne's point that, you know, the zoning rewrite's important. I think that's been something that I've said over and over again, that I am not a big fan of looking at things as they come up, just because, you know, it's, it's out of whim of a councilperson, and I, and I think it would be helpful to, to have, have us sort of push on that any way that we can to move that zoning rewrite. I also think that it might be helpful for us to think about our own policy and procedures and sort of how we operate and how we review applications. I think, you know, I look at something like Institute for Savings and some of the other applicants and just sort of how long it's taking some projects to come through the process. And I think, I know that as a developer, it's, it's not inexpensive to bring a team to do, to have a review, and I think that we might need to just think a little bit better about how we're, maybe the staff's handling applications when they first get them, and then, and then us maybe not putting something on the agenda that's not quite ready to go. And I think that, that in the end, I think that applicants might appreciate that more. So I, I guess that's, that's the other piece, too, and I don't know what on the, from the staff level, what, what needs to happen there. But we should, we should just start thinking about that, whether there needs to be more coordination with other departments or something to that effect. But that's just been something that, that I've noticed and has been, that I think it would be a source of frustration if I were an applicant to the Newbury Planning Board.
Great. Thank you very much. Next?
This is Alden. Just from my point of view, I think the things mentioned are, are things that are important and, and on the top of my list. I like the idea of the review of the zoning ordinances and the looking into the Waterfront West issues, particularly with the, with that zoning.
Yes? Anybody else?
Can you hear me?
Now, yes.
Okay, sorry. I guess, just Anne's point of the zoning advisory committee, I also was on it, and it seemed like we made great progress, and we got very far, and it seemed like it was ready to move forward, and I don't exactly understand why it didn't. And it seems like we just get these piecemeal zoning issues that come up that take forever to work through, where it's already been discussed, and it's, it seems like a waste of time to keep doing it in that manner. I'd like to see the new zoning adopted.
Got your frustration.
This is Don. I, I would add one item that hasn't been discussed, which is affordable housing. I'd like to, to, to see that be considered by the planning board, and I understand the need that that will require working with the First Planning Development Subcommittee and, and also the other housing commissions, authorities within the town to try to build some type of a base in understanding what do we really want to do, if, if anything. So that, that's my one suggestion to other items that have already been discussed.
I'm the only one who hasn't spoken yet. I think whatever, but everybody is making great suggestions, and I support all of the, in particular, Rick's six points, I think, are critical, but I would just like to say that to the extent that Rick's list reflects my primary concern, which is being more supportive of the environment in our ordinances, I feel like so often we have projects come through and we said, but can you please consider solar panels? Knowing darn well that they're not going to consider solar, solar panels, for example. I would like our, I would like, when we look at resiliency and, and the issues that, that were on, on Rick's list, a couple of them were particularly environmental-oriented. I would love to have more leverage to stand on, to, with, with applicants, to, to raise the stakes higher.
For, for any special permit, right?
Correct.
Okay. Beth, have we heard from you?
No, you haven't. Um, I mean, I agree with a lot of the points that have been made, Waterfront West, sea level rise, what Leah just mentioned, getting some more in regards to environmental protection and sustainability. I guess the only thing that hasn't been mentioned, and this kind of came up last week, and is more of a process issue, but I think maybe we need to think about the process so that we don't end up with a similar situation like we were talking about with Croline and Low Street, where there are traffic concerns that don't get raised, and then, you know, people are saying we should have looked further at them. I think we just need a process so that we know what the issues are from, you know, traffic and public safety. Point of view.
In other words, when issues are raised, get some resolution and not just sort of.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know why. Take care of that or whatever. Someone, you know, DPS is saying that we should have done something more than what we did and not saying it prior to permitting.
Right. So to look at where we have, just to interpret that a little bit, look at where we have blind spots, which we're perfectly capable of identifying, and not assuming that something magic is going to happen, and so we just go ahead and approve, make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay, just be more self-aware and stop the process, which is just the opposite of what Tanya was saying, but this would be legitimized by an issue that's come up in the discussion of the application that says, we don't have the information that we have to have to make this a successful project for you by, say, approving it right now.
Right.
So that, that sort of fits in with her, a different way of looking at her policies and procedures. Okay. So the rewrite is the big, sounds like the really big issue, and that's the hardest one to attack. I know Andy has laid out some initial steps to do that. I'm wondering if there's some way we can help move that process along, and I'll, I'll send it back to Andy, either off the top of your head or to give it some thought and come back to us on that, but you here are concerned for the whole ball of wax and not bits and pieces. So can you help us figure out how we could best help move that forward?
Yeah, definitely. It's something that's concerned me as well. You know, during the time that I've been here, there are a number of things that this office has to do at any given time. It is hard, unfortunately, for staff. We have had a few rotations, but it's hard to, and I don't know whether Rick has had this experience in the other communities that he's worked in, obviously not necessarily in his private work, but it is hard for staff with limited time, and again, limited funds. Sometimes we ask for monies for the master plan update, for the zoning update. We didn't get, from the office's perspective, we didn't get everything that we had initially requested. And so that leaves us as staff to try to squeeze that in between all the things that have to be done during a given day. So unfortunately, you know, the pandemic has made that situation a little bit more difficult in some ways, but we spend a lot of our time on bureaucratic processes that have to be implemented, because they're required by state statute, local ordinance, et cetera. We have to coordinate with a number of different parties, so a lot of time is spent on, on that process. We also have to do. We also have to deal with a number of other things during any given day. So what happens is because we end up spending a lot of time during meetings and that, all these things eat into the day, there's very little time to spend on the proactive rewriting of things like the entire zoning ordinance. We started working on that project some years ago and the community opportunities group was given, I think it was about half of the monies I had requested at the time, was requested from the mayor to the city council, the city council appropriated that. We did not have enough monies at that time to have them do the entire zoning ordinance. So the idea was we would split that workload. Office began working on some sections, the consultant began working on sections. And we went through, as some of you know, in Newburyport, there are issues that are very difficult to come to agreement on in Newburyport, waterfront west being one, for instance, and that's a zoning issue. And so because the ordinance is very complicated in Newburyport and there's a lot of cross-referencing and so forth, every time we would change a particular section, we'd go back and have to touch something new. So it became obvious, the consultant was very passionate about and felt it was essential to the project to bring forward the entire ordinance as one package. It became really not possible to do that. And it seems to me that the approach that we should take is, although I'd much rather do the entire ordinance at once, is given the limited time and resources that staff have, unless additional funds are appropriated for staff or consulting services, is to do those big chunks that we can at any given time. The other thing that I've found has been less than effective in recent years and is a little bit, I found a little bit different here in Newburyport than other places I've worked is I think it makes more sense for this office and for the planning board to just bring forward zoning changes that we think are appropriate to the city council rather than waiting for or going at the sole discretion of city councillors, whether or not they are interested in sponsoring. We do have the limitation here that in the city council's rules require that there be a sponsor for any ordinance being brought forward. That's not necessarily beneficial, in my opinion, from a zoning update perspective. But what I've suggested in a few other discussions with, I think, the chair and with the chair of the planning and development committee of the city council is that we effectively, if we cannot secure a sponsor for the changes that we think are necessary, then we should bring those forward as communications to the city council. Here is a draft zoning change that we think is necessary to address X issue or several issues at once, if it's a package. So at this time, we have a couple of things we are bringing forward in January, we'll bring forward some more in the coming months. But we're going to do chunks of things that we think are manageable, whether they be housekeeping things or substantive changes. But there are certain areas that I do think some more community debate or deliberation is needed. So for instance, waterfront west, I think that needs some sort of 3D model or analysis. And I think getting the funds for that will be extremely helpful because we can go endlessly over language of an ordinance. But the community does need to agree on the right size and massing of things over there before anybody proposes an ordinance and puts it forward in a formal adoption process.
Andy, let me ask you this question. I want to back you up to what you were saying in the beginning. You ran out of money for the consultants. If we found more money for the consulting firm, would that relieve the staff burden on this process and help us move forward?
It would definitely, and there's a few key areas it would be.
Okay, now let me just make one more comment. Because when I was reappointed to the planning board, remember Jared had to interview us all? So he was asking, what do you see as issues and what do you need? And I said, well, gee, sometimes I'm really confounded by legal opinions. And it seems like the city doesn't really want to spend money on outside things. And he was very clear, if you people think you need money for something, you come to us. Now, when I was on the zoning advisory committee, so was Jared. And I know the rewrite of zoning is a very important thing to him. So if staff can't handle it, if that's the message we're getting and we're confident in a consulting firm that they could move it ahead, then why don't we see what that would require financially and start with a conversation with Jared? I would assume he would support that.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
I'm curious to know, what are the pieces that Andy has already identified that he wants to move forward from the rewrite? So to carve out what's quote unquote "done" as much as can be done before a joint public hearing is held on it? And what are the outstanding areas that would then need further work? And that's what I would think he could go to the city council for additional funding to work out. But I think it sounds like there's stuff ready to go. And it's so far back in my memory, a year and a half ago, that I can't even remember. So I wouldn't even begin to start to do it off the top of my head. But if you could outline those two categories of parts that make up the rewrite, then it would be clear to everybody what needs to be done, what we can do now and what still needs further work.
Yeah, definitely. I can give you a pretty good synopsis of that right now, I think.
No, whoa, 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 whoa. I don't want to get
Write it down.
Yeah, I don't want to get into a lot of detail on one of these things. And unless it's documented, we're all going to forget and I don't want to just have
No, no, I'm talking about an overview, not a detailed. Just to give you, you asked, you wanted some idea of where certain things are in terms of being readiness versus things that require additional work, including the reference to consultants. So I thought you were looking for a synopsis of that.
All right, a synopsis.
So there are some administrative changes or language in the administrative section, definitions and so forth. Some what we're calling housekeeping right now. So Jennifer and Jared and I are bringing forward that our plan is the second council meeting in January to have that go forward. I would also like to see the Plum Island piece come forward from there. When we last spoke with councillor Agaman, this is maybe a couple of months ago, about the zoning rewrite project and bringing some of that forward again. I remember earlier this year when COVID started, there was no willingness or interest in having zoning hearings. But it became apparent over the course of the pandemic that we need to get going again with hearings for projects, for instance. So there was agreement to go ahead with zoning changes again. Short-term rental units hasn't unfortunately gone very far, it's still in deliberation. But when Jennifer and Jared and I discussed the zoning rewrite, we agreed that we would take the big chunks or substantive pieces of that and bring that forward. So what we decided to package together at that time was the uses, the zoning uses section, the dimension requirements and the parking section. And basically to take those sections and bring those forward as one package, then move on to other sections after that, signage and performance standards and then things like that. The idea, and then we could do things like the additional more progressive things like sustainability and so forth. But after we clean up the overall structure of the ordinance. At that time, councillor Agaman did not feel comfortable with one aspect of the rewrite, which was we originally agreed on changing a little bit of the structure of the ordinance to make it a little bit more logical for folks who were trying to find information. There was some concern, I guess, when he spoke with the city clerk's office, there was some concern about, as I understand it, the cost it would take for the consultant to then transfer all that into municide code, which is where the zoning ordinance and the city codes are posted right now. To basically transfer all that online and then to send us the new hard copy pages, if you will, there was concern about the cost that would take. So there was a preference to set that aside and then focus on the other aspects of those sections. So we took those and we put those together. Then there was, because there were two subject districts in the residential R2A and R2B districts we were talking about, there was some concern that the dimensional table that we had developed in the zoning advisory committee was not necessarily a key issue that needed to be brought forward at that point. So that was in part set aside as well. And at that point, we got into a bit of a stumbling block there. There wasn't necessarily consensus or agreement on what should be brought forward at that point. That was maybe two months or three months ago, maybe at this point. I have decided, based on the experiences that I've had over the last couple of years, to just bring forward sections. If there's a sponsor that we can get for it, that's great. If not, I think it should go as a communication to the council as a draft version that we believe is ready for adoption or should be considered for adoption. And recognize that while it would be great to have the consultant, I would love to have more monies available for consultant services to pay for developing specific sections where we need further specialty or expertise to help with some of those sections to spread the workload a bit for the hours in a day that we don't have. I'd love to have that happen, but I also think that there's a difficulty in coordinating all those sections at a single point in time sufficient for the council to adopt. I think based on my experiences here, it seems more likely that we can get something accomplished by taking chunks of that and bringing that forward rather than thinking we're going to get the whole thing through at one point in time. Because unfortunately, that ends up being a lot of back and forth that never gets resolved because there are just too many overlapping changes happening simultaneously.
Can I say two things? First of all, Andy, could you write down with a timetable the chunks you're talking about? And for example, you said bring something forward to the city council in January, so we could get our arms around what that was. The other comment I would have, on the short time I was on that advisory committee, I was extremely impressed with the consultant who really pushed things along, but also has done work all over the Commonwealth and brought ideas in regard to what other communities are doing. So I found that refreshing and very valuable. I mean, I learned a lot from that consultant. And so realistically, what are you talking about that the staff in the city council could move forward? And then let's figure out what is the balance? And I don't know, I just thought the process of bringing in an outside person was a good one. And I thought she was talented, she knew how to run a meeting. She, I don't know, I mean, that's what she gets paid for, producing reports, which would be the deliverable, the revised zoning. So I just don't want another year to slip by and we're in these piecemeals again. And every other month, we're wasting so much time on a zoning hearing.
Andy, I have a question. I actually found the Engage Newburyport site while we were here. And it reminded me that originally the project was to do a recodification. But it sounds, from what you said about the concerns about costs with municide code, that we're not going to do a recodification anymore, we're just going to do a revision of the sections with the existing outline. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. It's my understanding that councillor Agaman, who I guess partly got this concern from the city clerk, did not feel that that would be the best expenditure of funds at this time, maybe because of the pandemic or whatnot. At that point, we rolled in the pandemic. So we decided to put that aside and as you said, sort of leave the structure as it is. We wanted to get rid of Roman numerals, for instance, or reorganize so that overlay districts are in one place. And so there was a decision, sort of an executive decision to sort of set aside those structural changes and then take chunks of it. And that was where we went to the dimensional table, the use table, for instance, because we felt that those are big substantive pieces that we should bring forward and then focus on other sections after that.
So you would actually have to take, in order to bring those forward, you'd have to take the things that are published on the Engage Newburyport site and then renumber them all and put them into the structure of the existing ordinance?
Correct, and that's literally what I'm doing right now. I spent time today working on that, I'm spending time tomorrow working on that. We're trying to basically take the pieces of what we worked on in the zoning rewrite and now put them back into the current structure of the ordinance. While, and again, Jennifer and I have been working closely on this, but trying to add in additional edits that we feel like are appropriate or necessary for issues that have been discovered largely as she's dealing with the zoning administration, routing of who needs to get what types of permits and then the enforcement side of things, what enforcement issues come up. We've both been working together to come up with ideas of how to clean up language in the ordinance. It's either archaic or not clear, et cetera. So the idea there is we're going to be bringing chunks of that forward. And so removing the overlay districts, for instance, was one of the things in the rewrite, cleaning up old sections that don't need to be there. So that's the type of thing we're talking about right now. What I would like to do after we get those chunks done, including the administrative section of the ordinance, is then to deal with the other things like completely updating and overhauling the signage section of the ordinance, parking and landscape standards, some of the design standards and things that we had talked about before. I'd like to see more expansive design standards. Something to cover the residential district a little bit more than just the question of whether or not buildings are being demolished, but setting some sort of standards for what infill might be appropriate in those neighborhoods, some sort of parameters for that sort of thing. And then, of course, as you all mentioned, waterfront west, to have something that the city feels comfortable with for waterfront west. And I do think that stems from, first, from a massing and design perspective and then into text of the waterfront west overlay district. But I do agree that that should be done because it is an important chunk of the city's downtown. The other thing I'd like to focus on is the Story Avenue area. I would like to see us adopt zoning changes for that area that would convert, I realize, a long period of time, that area into more of a village node of the city, walkable, the buildings towards the streetscape, et cetera, rather than the auto-centric development pattern that it has right now. I realize that's going to take a long time because there's value in the properties as they are. But I think that if we adopt the right zoning changes there, that over time, that can be a more appropriate gateway to the city than the traditional strip mall area. So those are some of the things that are on my radar. There are other areas to work on, of course, but that and the Plum Island area, I think, are particularly important for the city with the current erosion issues, for instance, just routinely seeing those issues, it seems like an area that we should focus on as well.
So I think building on what Anne was asking about schedule, I think, or timetable, I think it'd be really helpful to know the things that you've identified, when you expect to get them to the council. And then, you know, some of these will take multiple public hearings with the planning board and the planning and development committee. So sending something at the, were you saying the end of January or February?
So the first piece of that would be at the end of January. There's going to be another chunk of that administrative additional language and so forth in February. Then I think that we need to have some further discussion about whether or not we are going to bring forward the use table that we had been working on in the zoning advisory committee, because that is a more substantial change. There was some hesitation a couple of months ago when we were talking with the council sponsor about it. So we do need to go back and discuss that. The community opportunities group have been working under the assumption the entire time. And the whole structure of that process was with the assumption we're adopting one new ordinance where everything was cross-referenced correctly based on that new structure. Because we would be reverting back to the current structure of the ordinance, a lot of different cross-references has to be made and so forth to go back and forth and do that. And of course, as we're doing that, there are other changes that people are bringing up and saying they want in there. So the idea is in January to bring forward a package of those things, including some of the stuff from the rewrite. February to do the same thing and continue to, every two months, if you will, see a new amendment that is being brought forward that's a chunk of those items. Short-term rental units, for instance, that has been kicking around for a number of months and there hasn't been a policy level agreement on what the content of that should be. So my preference is that we, for instance, with waterfront west, is rather than seeing something sponsored in the packet, to come to some agreement policy-wise between the city council and the planning board over what design parameters should apply there, what kind of massing and height would be appropriate, for instance, and then to rate the zoning accordingly. Rather than, unfortunately, the way it unfolded last time was starting with something that's being proposed, but not necessarily having the discussion about whether or not the community felt comfortable with how that would fit in the downtown.
So where I was going with my, the thing about the timetable was that if we have something going in at the end of January, that might mean we have public hearings happening in February and March and then it goes back to the council in April or whatever. So it would be helpful to know, you've got some things that you're already thinking about. It'd be helpful to know how much of our time is essentially already budgeted for public hearings and making revisions to drafts and that sort of thing. Because we may have all these great ideas about things we want to do, but we won't have time to do them if we're in the middle of three or four zoning ordinances at different stages of the council, having to have these overlapping public hearings. So I think it would probably be helpful to be realistic about what we can really do to know what your sense of realistic timeline is. I mean, I know you can't do it because we get to a public hearing and everything changes. But if you knew that you had But, you know, if you knew that you had three things or four things coming forward and they were going to come forward in January and March and May. And then we'd be having public hearings in the intervening months, that would be good to know. I guess just to help us know whether we're going to be able to squeeze anything else in.
Yeah, I agree with that. I also don't hear an answer to my question, which was, how can the planning board help you, Andy? Because this looks like the pieces of the rewrite that you want to bring forward don't really need our input until the joint public hearing. But that's different from, let's just choose one, Waterfront West Overlay District. That one we need to be more engaged with, even if it's simply, well, starting with if everybody agrees, I write a request to the city council to fund 3D modeling so that we can then put that on our calendar of things that we're actually going to look at. And maybe there's some coordination that has to happen with the city council there. So we're more actively involved in that type of issue, taking it forward. Whereas with some of the others, we just wait for it to show up on the agenda. So if there are things, if you can imagine where there are pieces or whole projects that could be created around any of the items that we've listed. Or anything that you have on your agenda, we would be happy to to consider them. And potentially put together subcommittees who could work offline and bring it, bring the information back to a working session with the planning board. We're here and ready to do this kind of work, to the point where I would even put aside an entire planning board meeting. Well planned in advance, where we do no applications at all, but work on open issues at that point. Could you help us to help you?
Definitely with Waterfront West, having, in my opinion, the the major stumbling block for there for the community has always been, you know, what is appropriate design and massing wise. So I think that having some funds for that, if the the planning board could advocate for funding, you know, happy to advocate for that myself again with the mayor and the council. But to have some funds for that modeling so that we can then come to some agreement as to how that should be dealt with from a design perspective, then the the writing of the ordinance becomes much more straightforward at that point, because you're not chasing your tail going around in circles, trying to figure out what makes sense. That I think is significant. The other piece I think is, for instance, the the Water Resource Protection District, one of the things I had been trying to do for the last really couple of years is to coordinate with the the water division to see if we can get some feedback from them and their consultant on updating the standards within that district. So that they all understand, though that their department, obviously, and their consultants better understand how to protect the water supply. So to basically get the best practices, if you will, into that overlay district of the of the city. So that was one, that was another area. From a, again, from from the, my perspective as as Director of Planning and Development, I think that, again, Plum Island is a significant issue. If you talk about sustainability in the city, you know, I know the Business Park was mentioned, but I really do think Plum Island is is the most you know, the area most in jeopardy in the city if we're going to talk about sustainability. So if the planning board does want to address as a long term, you know, the board assigned with long term thinking and you know, land use regulations and development patterns. To me, I think supporting or advocating for that change would be appropriate because it is going to have a substantial impact on the city long term. It already has an impact. There are issues with the water and sewer system that are out there, the erosion and so forth. So I think advocating for that change as it's brought forward will also be particularly to the city's, you know, best interest. The the other thing I think is, this is more of an educational thing, I think, but in the downtown overlay district, which I think is of the DCON and the DoD, I think the DoD is 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 the better, you know, more strengthened ordinance. That ordinance makes strong reference to the Secretary of Interior Standards, and I think it would be good for the planning board. And really, the Historic Commission and other boards to work together to make sure that there's a good understanding of how those standards apply to different work. And that way, the volunteer board members that are coming in for a few hours, you know, every month. As they were looking at applications, you can think about those standards and have them, you know, in your mind as you think about what may or may not be appropriate in a given instance. So I realize that's more of a, a, maybe it might be a workshop type thing. We did something like that a month or two back with the Historic Commission. Counselor Agaman and I went through some slides, basically overview of how, you know, preservation restrictions work, how their ordinances work. So that, you know, the basic content of a preservation restriction, what provisions they should be looking for, you know, so they're not, you know, you know, taken for a ride by, you know, a developer. And the same thing with their own ordinances. So we went through the DCON ordinance, we went through the DoD, we went through the demolition delay ordinance, and we talked about the processes and the key components. And I think that's with regard to the Secretary's Interior Standards, given that it's so important to the downtown overlay district and anything you'll be seeing in the coming years for that area. I would recommend that perhaps we do some sort of a, you know, maybe a meeting is devoted to that. Maybe we share and just distribute some information that might be helpful on that, or maybe board members spend individually time, you know, reviewing those documents as they're posted online. But to get more familiar with those provisions, and I do think that the other piece that I think consultant service services would be extremely helpful for. For instance, with the Story Avenue area, and it's been brought up with Waterfront West and even the 40 R District, where there was conversation about updating the design standards there before the pandemic. I think having some consultant funds available for the design provisions in particular. So working on the design diagrams, for instance, to illustrate what's appropriate, what's not. The the current best practices and so forth. Staff here, like I said, because we are so often burdened by the local processes we have to do, we don't have as much time, and this is sometimes why consultants are hired, because they are spending a lot of their time bouncing around from community to community. They have a better idea of what the best practices are, who's at the forefront of this or that. So we, unfortunately, we get bombarded with a story here or there from a community that might be, you know, making a progressive change in something. So we'll go look at it some of real for this progressive, you know, change they've made, you know, Cambridge for another. And I think the idea there is to try to get, I would like to see some better design standards in in additional areas of the city even. So the Story Avenue area, for instance, you know, the Institution for Savings is a nice building over there at that corner. But there are other buildings that that don't necessarily belong there, and some of that's just, you know, the the way that history has played out. But I think that going forward, when buildings and properties are redeveloped, we can think about how they should be done. So for instance, you know, bringing the buildings up to the streetscape.
Are you still there?
I am, yep.
Oh, all right. Yeah, that's a lot of detail. I'm looking, I'm trying to stand back and look at this from higher up. And I'm seeing the possibility of taking some direction from the master plan and doing a review with one or two people of the master plan goals and how they relate and the and any tasks that are in the action plan there. And how they relate to the topics that the planning board members and Andy have brought up tonight. And see if there's anything discreet there that we could sink our teeth into. Because a lot of what we've heard from you, Andy, have been either amendments or changes in the zoning that you want to take to the city council. And then we would participate in the public review of that. And other than Waterfront West Overlay District, I don't hear, maybe I just haven't cleaned out my ears well enough, but I don't hear a specific area that the planning board has expertise in to sit down and work on or to drive with other stakeholders. If I think of it that way, it's possible that we could, I don't know, work on, in addition to Waterfront West, work on Story Avenue. But then you suggest using a consultant to get out outside perspective, so that sort of limits us in what we can do. So I'm just sort of sharing my kind of initial confusion with all of this, because nothing's jumping out. And I'll go back to my first part of my statement to work with one or two other people to review the master plan goals. And what planning board members could actually work on based on our interests. If that makes sense, would anyone else like to review that with me?
I sure would.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd be interested, Bonnie.
I I would too.
Wow, sounds like I got lots of help.
Add something onto that too, which is that in my experience, I, you know, there's a lot of people who are really smart in in Newbury Port and have a lot of special skills. But might not necessarily want to do what we're doing, which is have this kind of open ended commitment for a five year period to do anything that comes before us. And I think that people are more likely to volunteer to help with something if they see in front of them a discrete task that they have skills for and that is going to have a defined timeline. And when I think about that is there there might be people, or there are people, there are people in town who are environmental scientists and landscape architects who could be invited to work on a task force on a particular thing. If we were looking at sea level rise, for example, first of all, we have the Resiliency Committee, so we could tap into into their expertise. But if we were looking at, you know, trying to be more environmentally sustainable in our parking lot requirements, we could invite, you know, decide that's a discrete task and invite people to you know, reach out to people who might be able to help us with that. So create an ad hoc subcommittee. So I think it's something we should think of, that it's not just us versus the staff versus a consultant, but that we can bring people in who have specialized expertise. And we couldn't invite them, they they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be attracted to the idea of doing what we're doing on a five year basis, but would be interested in doing it on a six month basis.
Great, okay. So that expands our pool of knowledge. And it also requires us to be really disciplined so that we don't let it drag on. So there's always, there's the the two pieces of this whole activity. One is what are we going to do and then the process for getting it to happen. I'll reinforce what what I think was Rick said to get it, get us a time, some sort of a chart, Andy. You don't have to be, you know, we won't hold your feet to the fire, but some sense of when you think these things are going to happen. So that we can see what's coming down the pike and then fit in other activities on other priorities that we as planning board members really want to push. That would really help us. And then I have a question. Is there any problem with open meeting law if Alden, Rick, Anne and I do a review of the master plan and and try to set some priorities and bring them back to the board?
Well, yeah, there are two things to go on that, by the way. So Caitlin and I will be working this month on an update to the master plan in terms of what progress has been made on the specific actions outlined in the master plan, just so you understand. Another effort that's being made relative to the master plan. As you're looking at the master plan and thinking about regulations and development patterns and so forth, and what you think might be appropriate to go and do at this point from there. The, I mean, staff. Staff can help out by, you know, reaching out to the other departments and and sort of, you know, providing that overview of what has been recommended in the in the prior plan, what's been accomplished since then. And what still needs to be, needs to be done. But if you want to meet as a committee to go over that in substance, essentially the way that the open meeting law works is if you're formally established as a subcommittee of the planning board, so you've got three members, let's say they're appointed for that subcommittee. That subcommittee should be treated essentially for the purposes of a meeting. Having a public meeting like the rest of the planning board would. So for instance, because you've been specifically designated for that task, the assumption there is that needs to be as transparent as a regular planning board meeting as well. So that is the guidance we've gotten from a couple of minutes page, the city's legal council. So if you wanted to have meetings like that, we could do that. That is very similar, I think, to what the city council does when it as a body breaks down into its planning and development committee or its budget finance committee and so forth. They also have to have their meetings publicly, you know, accessible to folks.
So that means you have to run a meeting for us because you're the only one that can do a public meeting.
Well, yeah, that that is unfortunately right now another limitation. We've we've tried, I've tried to break out the work a little bit right now. So Julia is is currently for the last few months, she has been successfully hosting all the Conservation Commission meetings. So I didn't have to, you know, be doing that. The pandemic has changed quite a bit of what we do here, just to keep things going. So so Caitlin and I both can host meetings right now for this particular, you know, division of the city. And we can help out by scheduling those meetings. If the only issue that we have with our account, and we could probably do it by spending a small amount more money, is making sure that there's maybe one or two other folks that could act as hosts of the meeting. And that way, even if Caitlin and I were not available, again, we, you know, throughout a week, we sometimes have two or three meetings already. If we're not available for some reason, you know, we're happy to host, I'm happy to host anytime I'm available. But if you, if we can't be there for some reason, that you could still host it yourself and and and, but, you know, meet this open meeting law requirement by having it broadcast that way. So, you know, we can work together, coordinate with you on that, but I don't mind, as long as my schedule allows for it, I don't mind hosting additional meetings. Whether it be, you know, during the evening or, you know, obviously during the day is a little bit easier. But during the evening is when most of the boards end up meeting, so having overlaps is problematic right now during the pandemic in particularly. But if they're during the day, even we can schedule those Zoom meetings, we can, you know, make the the online piece of it work smoothly like it does for your regular meetings. And that way you could, you know, do your your functions that way.
Well, that actually might work in our favor, because if one of you has to host a Zoom Zoom meeting and we're talking about what we think our priorities ought to be against the master plan goals and anything that's in the original document, you could update us at that point if we're planning to do something that's already been done. Or if we're going in a direction that department heads have taken another direction on. So that's actually a positive. I was sort of thinking, all right, we're taking even more of your time, but it might be a productive way to do it. But it doesn't mean that the four of us couldn't do our homework first and then bring it all together at a Zoom meeting, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we'll we'll talk offline about how to do that. I'm still thinking about Tanya's question, and I think it came up when somebody else was talking as well, oh, maybe Beth, about policies and procedures and the staff role in in, you know, reviewing applications, scheduling, all of that. It could actually, if we sorted it, started out what the problems are and found a way to work through around them, it could make our lives, all of our lives, a lot easier. So I know it sounds like, you know, sort of low priority, some sort of housekeeping. It actually is something that we could handle, we could tackle right away with another small group who could solicit concerns from everybody about how we schedule and handle applications, pull it all together and work through it with the very, you know, whoever the appropriate staff person is, and bring back some recommendations for for changes in in procedure. Would would anyone like to work on that? It's not, it's not very sexy, but it might really help us.
Bonnie, I would, I would love to to take it on. I mean, I've I've worked on, I've worked on this and 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 Andy, I want you to know this is not anything against you or your department. I know you guys have a lot going on. I think it's just more thinking about sort of how we can save time. Unfortunately, just personally, right now, I just can't take something new on. I've just just got some some things personally I'm working with that that is going to take up my time. So it just might be something, maybe we, if if nobody else wants to do it, I'm I'm happy to sort of maybe think about it in the next couple of months. So it just might be something maybe we, if nobody else wants to do it, I'm happy to sort of maybe think about it in the next couple of months, but I have more time.
Okay. Anyone else want to jump on it now? Beth, was that, did I miss remember your concern? I know you mentioned something in relationship. To Colby Lane and how we make decisions. Was that part of what Tanya's talking about in general, how we manage applications or is that separate?
I think so. I mean, it was a, yeah, process and procedure.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to leave that with the two of you. See what happens when you suggest something here?
You know, I honestly, I think it's, it's important, and I think, you know, I think it's, it's something that. That as a board, I think it will save us time. I think as, I think for staff, quite frankly, it's going to save some time too. So. So I think it's, it's always good to sort of think, think about policy and procedures. As part of our goals.
Okay. And I don't want to drop all the other ideas, so I'm going to add to my, our subcommittee of, we're now four. To see how everything we've talked about fits into master plan goals, but also not to let anything drop. Because all of this is of concern. And. Try to make some proposals for actions going forward. In general, this is. Process question. Does, does anyone have any thoughts about? Whether we should actually schedule a planning meeting so that it's on the calendar? Applicants are told about it in advance, so they will not get on the agenda for that night. And we just reserve it for, for planning board planning. What is that? Does that make any sense to anybody? I've talked to Rick about it. He's seen it work in other communities, but. We have lots of experience with. With overworked agendas and then empty agendas. Does this make sense to people to try to do this on a regular basis or a scheduled basis, let me say?
Bonnie, I'd like to, if I may answer the question indirectly, and others probably could answer it directly. You know, the, the items we discussed, I'm not sure if the rest of the members would agree, these are goals or goal setting. And if you, and this may be an incorrect analogy, if you take. What companies that I've worked for, and I suspect others have worked with respect to goal setting, there's always a couple of basic tenants in goals. They need to be discreet. They need, they need to be measurable, there needs to be accountability. And there's others that I'm surely not going to, you all have been involved, so I would just throw that out also if, if in fact we do think these are certain goals and. What are we going to do to get to them? I would suggest if we do have these meetings, perhaps we should keep that in mind, because without specific timetables and actions, whatever. Unfortunately, I've seen in the past, but you don't have that, they just continue to drift for whatever, for whatever reason. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Yeah, no, and that's backing on to what Rick was saying about having discrete tasks or projects to which we could invite others. With expertise to contribute, and they're not going to do that if it's just sort of, you know, a never ending. Kind of thing. So it's to our benefit for ourselves, but also for anyone else we ask to work on these things with us. That we are as precise in what we expect to have as outcomes, what the timetable is. And where, where it's going to go, not that it's just going to be, we're not consultants. You know, we're people with feet on the ground and we want to see things done differently. And so we want to have action taken as a result of our work. So I appreciate that reminder. Is there anything else?
Just one.
Right?
I would like to echo one thing that Andy said with respect to. Waterfront West and some of the others. If I had to pick one item, and I think some of us may have even discussed this when it was in front of us. If I had to pick up one item that can impact the character. Of Newburyport and the direction Newburyport's going in the next five, 10 years, whatever, I think it's Waterfront West. You know, we talked about. Uses and dimensions and parking and sustainability and all those things are great things, but if I had to pick was one item. I think that's it. And because, you know, it's participative in the sense that it has to be community input. I do think that it is critical for us to get funds, the city council to allocate funds. For that model. I mean, we saw what, you know, Rick and I started to do something where, you know, we wanted to hear some height limits, whatever. Maybe we understand it, but the general public needs to see a picture. It's a picture's worth within a thousand words in this case. We've seen it even within the, the planning board, in my opinion, you know, we spend a lot of time on, on. An institute for savings and, and you know. And to me, at the end of the day, it's just my opinion, you know, it probably would have been better to say, here's the box, you guys can play it, you know, it's the back and forth. And the end of the day, I think we've all agreed the last meeting, there was only two things or two key things that. Were concerned with height and, and how much volume was within that area. So again, I just think, you know, these, these models can really be helpful. Waterfront West, I think it's, it's imperative for the direction of the city. Anyway, my two cents on that.
Okay, I will draft a letter requesting funding from the city council on our behalf. Any parting words on what we should be doing? Oh, planning. What did you, that's what I was going to ask. I was asking. Anyone have any thoughts on whether or not we should actually try to schedule a full planning board meeting for planning issues?
I'll put in my two cents. I guess I feel like it's something that, like every six months to have one meeting would seem appropriate. You know, it seems like. There are plenty of meetings that we don't have as much to go through recently, but. That wasn't the case before. I mean, I feel like with COVID, we've, we've had empty, you know, much more brief meetings. If there's big projects to review, it goes on and on and on every night, you know, and it can be tough. So if we just do it once every six months, it seems like that might be doable to fit into the schedule.
Okay. And there would be nothing else scheduled for the night, even if we're in the middle of some huge project, they would know upfront. That date is not available for any kind of hearing.
I guess, you know, is that okay to do to, you know?
Yes, we absolutely can do that. I mean, I'm going to leave on the calendar, on the agenda, potential zoning amendments. That'll be on every one of them. And we pick stuff up at that point. That's a reminder, but it's also. A place where we can discuss issues as they're in progress, but. What I'm talking about now is a whole meeting set aside. For all, any subcommittees, anything that's coming out of the city council, anything's coming out of the staff. To really work the issues.
I would just want to make sure that it's very structured and those issues were identified beforehand. And, you know. We identified people who are going to address those. I just wouldn't want to see something.
No, no.
Talk about planning.
No, 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 it would be, you know, any of these projects that we decide to start on, and there are people off working them in. Subcommittees or ad hoc committees or whatever you call it. And we need to bring stuff, and they need to bring stuff back to the planning board to agree. I don't know, policy issues around Waterfront West or language for a new zoning ordinance. I mean, it would be the kind, it would be a working session. It'd be pretty much like a workshop. It'd be open. The agenda would be set around the topics that need to be worked on.
I would, I would support that. I've seen it in, in, in action in other places, so I would. It's not like we're inventing something new here. I think it's, it's something that is a way to carve time out of our busy schedule to step back and think about things.
Yeah, seems reasonable to me.
Okay, so I'll look at six months from tonight. See what, where it puts us on the calendar. I mean, if we know it's in a time of the year or a month or something where we're going to, we can foresee. A lot of business, we can slip it a week or a meeting or two, but basically six months.
Six months from now is July 4th, we won't be meeting probably.
Really? Well, oh, there you go. In the summer, we tend to have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So we shouldn't have it then because we would be wiping applicants out for a whole month. Let's say the last meeting in June.
Sounds good.
All right, whatever that is will be our, our official planning. Meeting. Okay. I'll tell everybody who needs to know that. All right. I don't think there are any other updates, are there, Andy?
No, I think with the zoning, that's the big one that we covered. I'm glad we also touched on the master plan because you'll be seeing us essentially give a progress report of where we are. So that covers, I think, big issues or big concerns of this department. There are other capital projects and transportation, you know, connectivity issues like the Route One Rotary, for instance. If the board here is concerned at all about that, the city council has discussed that one. That's the, the real crossing of Route One at the Rotary there. We're trying to get Mast D O Ts District Four to participate in a local meeting so we can review those plans, you know, in a more public format. We did mention those as part of a couple of meetings with the general public and the city council for. The Parker Street section at State Street that's being done right now. That's the phase three, if you will, of the rail trail. But we have to rely upon Mast D O T to do the crossing of Route One unless we come up with a substantial amount of funds. And given it's their right of way, they have to feel comfortable with the plans. So they came up with a set of plans for that, those improvements that would create a crossing. But the idea there was to try to get some more public vetting of that locally, make sure that any issues, that any concerns anyone had locally were addressed before Mast D O T constructs it. So if you're interested in all and being involved with that, stay tuned. We're not exactly sure if or when the Mast D O T would participate in that sort of thing. But it's our understanding that their, their plan is to do in the next year or two to roll that into a repaving project for Route One. So that's worth, worth noting, I think. The other thing I would say is just if, for those of you who haven't been out to Plum Island, take a look at the, between the jetty and the north point on the beach there. Two interesting things. One is the significant amount of erosion that's happened. With the blocks and sandbags that were recently placed and reinforced, having them, you know, just blown right over. And, and that's partly due to the, the jetty actually doing its job, which is sort of, you know, keeping that channel open for navigation. But a lot of erosions happen there, and interestingly, there's a foundation that's been exposed. Where we're, I think we're still tracking exactly the history of that structure, but there's an interesting sort of foundation out there with some piping and so forth that just completely got exposed as a result of this. And, you know, I don't think anybody had really known, nobody who's working for the city right now anyway. Knew or expected exactly where that, where that was going to be coming from. So, so that may be of interest, you know, as well. One other thing I would note is on the Evergreen Commons Port Place project, I. I expect, my expectation is that this year, possibly in the springtime, Jennifer, I've been talking about that project where they stand. You know, if you want to take a look and sort of, you know, see where that project stands, I think that the. The developer and the residents there possibly, you know, maybe coming forward to the city council, asking for public acceptance of the roadways there. And that was one of the larger, more recent projects that the, the planning board had, had looked at. It's a little bit different than the Oleo Woods project, a little bit more compact in Oleo Woods. But that neighborhood is flushing out. So if you wanted to get a sense of, you know, how that's turning out, you know, today's day and age. I do remain concerned, as I did during initial permitting, that developing over the public water supply is, you know, potentially problematic. And I'm hopeful that does not, you know, come to fruition anyway. But it certainly is, is an interesting and nice aspect of that project. I, I do think that the trees that were planted. And the open space in the middle are a little substandard there and perhaps don't contribute as well to that, that space. But, you know, take a look at that one. It's worth taking a look at, and I, I would ask also to. If you think about the Story Avenue area and what you think makes sense there, I do think, I do think that changing some of the. You know, design standards or parameters for that type of area and even flipping, so we really try to get our buildings up to the streetscape and the parking behind are nestled. Would be a good thing for the city. It's a, I wouldn't say neglected area of the city, but in terms of design and permitting, it's, it's the most strip mall like. And therefore at least representative of, I think, what we think of as Newburyport.
Okay, final words from anybody for our first meeting in 2021.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Oh, no, I heard Rick first, I think, right? Okay, and I will now take roll call. Alden.
Yes.
Beth.
Yes.
Ann.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Leah.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
MJ.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. And we are done for the evening. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Okay.
Night.
Good night.
Night.